Brain borders of liquor control, but I have a motion on the agenda.
One second.
Not all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Um, does anybody have a problem doing a consent agenda? Two, three, four, and five, or two, three, four.
Two, four.
Two forms, yeah. I'm sorry. We get a motion on that.
Uh, I move that uh, we address number two and four as a consent.
Do we have a second? Second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. I just have it. Uh, public comment on liquor control. None being heard, any from the board at all?
No.
Public, none being heard. We will have a motion to adjourn, make the motion adjourn. Any discussion? Although in favor, aye.
Aye.
Undebatable. Now we'll move to the cannabis control commissioners meeting. We'll wait for Heather.
Me too.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry. We're on, we just did the liquor control, now we're moving on.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll call to order the cannabis control commissioners meeting. Uh, can we have a motion on the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. I just have it.
I move to approve the minutes from October twenty-fourth.
Do we have a second on that? I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
I'm abstaining. I'm so abstaining.
Okay, we got uh, three ayes and two abstentions. Uh, public comment. Uh, anybody on the board?
No.
Yes, sir. Chad, could you state your name for the?
Yes. Hi, uh, I'm Benjamin Shaw, one of the others in under organics here in town. Uh, we moved to Brandon to open our business here and it's been going well, so I just wanted to say thank you to the board and thank you to town. Town's been nothing but welcoming. Uh, we've been doing well, we're growing, we're hiring employees now. Uh, it's pretty crazy to think that it's happening off here in Brandon. Um, I saw on the agenda that there are some new licenses and renewals up over discussion later this afternoon. Uh, I just ask that the board, as more licenses start to pop up in Brandon, uh, in order to keep in mind that cannabis is a new market, it's a volatile market and uh, we like to continue to keep Brandon as our home. Uh, and as new licenses get approved, uh, we just ask the board to keep in mind who to be approved and possibly where funding.
Thank you.
So, um, uh, what does it mean to where funding's coming from, are you suggesting some of it's coming from out of state or something?
Uh, yeah, there, there definitely is and um, there are ways to get around that. We are independently operated, I own thirty-two percent of those thirty-three. Um, so we are, we are here, we live in these communities, um, not all businesses, not always like cannabis businesses in the Bronx propulsion that way. Um, and cannabis is a heavily funded industry. Uh, and as since it is a new market, uh, there are definitely different strategies at work, some strategies that may be only viable to certain scales of producers and, and businesses and maybe unacceptable or unavailable to people like us.
So, um, I, I find it, I appreciate your input because I, um, it helps, um, but I, I think it's also useful at this point because, um, so the public understands what our role is. It's as near as I can tell, we don't have anything to say about whether someone's funded, where they're funded, it's like no part of our purview. And so I just want to be clear, you understand that that's, um, unless I stand to be corrected by anybody.
No, I, I, I think that Mr. Giles, um, as we have been informed, what we do as a local board of cannabis commissioners is pretty much a pro forma rubber stamp of the state.
Well, I, I would take a, I'm, I'm finish your thought and then I'd like to.
We can control certain things within our land use control purview or when our nuisance control purview. There's some things like the actual investigation of like background checks, funding, things like that. That sadly is not within our.
Yeah, a- as you know, this is still a, a new thing for a state and, and certainly for all of us. I think this is only the second or third time we've met as the control board. And um, my understanding is that our role is to be the most local frontline if you're not a good neighbor. And we can kind of put some sand in the gears if that's a problem and we need to slow things down. But other than that, yeah, my understanding is we have almost no authority at all that, um.
As, as a licensed holder in the state, I am still a little unclear sort of around the nature of the states, the state boards relationship with the local boards. Like, you guys need any help or would like anything?
Well, this is why I'm glad you're here because I actually, because this, the first time we're going through this, we typically with the liquor controls, you may have noticed, go kind of, everything passes because we just, it's, we know how that works and liquor's been around a long time. And so, um, we, we know what we're doing. This, I would very much, if you're willing to um, chime in to talk about it when we get to it, it's coming up as the next agenda item. You know, what a tier one and what a tier three is and, um, and what some of these um, outdoor cultivator mix called, the terminology would be wonderful to have you, um, share your knowledge. Great.
Thank you.
Anything else on public comment? None being heard, we're gonna move to four. Approved cannabis establishments approved by Vermont Cannabis Cannabis Control Board. How would you like to do this? Would you like to do the? Keep the A, B, and C because they're tier one?
Well, I, I.
Or you want to do them individually?
I think I'm comfortable and if I, it's, it's up to the rest of the board, but I'm comfortable saying let's uh, make a motion to approve these and then have a discussion and then have him um, talk to us a little bit about this.
Okay.
So I, I make a motion that we approve the A through F uh, applications that have come to us.
Alright, we got a motion to do A through F, do we have a second? One second. Any discussion?
Great, and so, um, yeah, um, it says here our first three, I don't know if you have an agenda, but um, our first three are outdoor cultivator tier one. And we have one person called Friendly Farmers, one called Derek Eve LLC DAB Maximum Buds, and one called Funk Farming LLC. Do you know where they're located?
Um, we do not, there are like a list of locations for every license cannabis establishment is available through the state's web, uh, website.
It's something, okay.
Uh, but that information, the state does have that information, um, that you know some of these people, they are here in town. Um, if you had questions about smear size.
So tier one, is that a small where tier three is bigger?
Yep, so tier one is the lowest scale of uh, license that is issued, that is primarily made tier manufacturing and cultivation. Um, there are different sort of canopy requirements on indoor versus outdoor. Um, there is tier one, two, three, four, there was proposed tier five, the state recently announced that they were no longer going to accept anymore at that largest scale. Um, sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me, where those indoor.
These were outdoor cultivators. The, the, the next one is mixed cultivator.
Well, it's a tier one.
And that, that would be a combination of indoor and outdoors.
Oh, mixed meaning indoor, outdoor, okay. And tier three is larger.
Tier three is larger.
And then the last one says integrated licenses renewal.
Yes, that was kind of what we were just commenting about. Um, the integrated, there are, an integrated license is a special license type given by the state. Um, it automatically it like enables the license holder to apply for, or have access to one of each type of cannabis license in the state. Um, cultivation, production, retail, manufacturing. Um, the integrated license holder on the agenda today is Craft Leaks just off the road. Um, the medical companies were given, uh, as part of the Oklahoma's recreational bill, medical companies here in the state, there are five of them, um, they were given a, they were given priority for these integrated licenses. And so,
And are you suggesting you'd like to have an integrated license at some point?
Um, we, and we are also in the process of getting our cultivation license up and running. Um, we did not apply for integrated license as.
So, so what, um, I, I realize you came in um, appropriately without going through us because we didn't apparently do the right letting people know that we existed. And so I'm glad you're here, um, wha- what level license do you have?
So retailers are just right now are only active licenses or retail license, um, retail licenses are not true or, or there's no scale for those. Uh, so we just have your retailer number twenty-seven.
Okay, retail number twenty-seven.
Um, Mr. Chair, members of the, members of the board, members of the public, um, I would just caution that the state has really requested in a very um, definite way that the physical addresses of any cannabis establishment not be disclosed as a matter of discourse in the public meeting.
Which makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Uh, we have a motion. Uh, we've got a motion, we'll vote a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. I just have it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Back at, second.
Be to it.
There you go.
I think it's the first time. Yeah.
We will move now to the board, the board of sewer commissioners. Uh, so we'll call out to order. Uh, we have a motion on the agenda. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Changes? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Uh, approval of the minutes.
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Public comment. Any public comment on the sewer commissioner? None being heard. Uh, we'll go to four, discussing high flow events at the wastewater plant.
I, um, I guess, yeah, I, I, I'll introduce the idea and then I'm really counting on hearing stuff from Seth because he's done some research in this. I, um, I was interested with the flooding that's gone on recently and the releases that have been, um, that have been caused by the flooding. And, um, and I know we've had this happen before because we have great wastewater treatment plant operators who do their job and, you know, keep us safe and at some point they've got to make the decision when there's too much stuff coming in to throw the switch and um, because they can't handle the, the volume. And I was surprised when I read, um, uh, that Waterbury had a massive flooding event ten or more years ago, um, or whenever it was. And, um, that they invested a bunch of money and I read an article recently that their system, even with the recent floods, did not release any effluent. And, um, I, I was impressed by that and I thought, I wonder what we could do here to, um, to, to look into this, um, uh, so, so we would understand what the scale of the problem is and what the scale of the solutions might be. Um, because ultimately releasing, um, effluent into the river is not a environmentally friendly thing to do. So, um, so I asked, I talked to Seth and apparently Seth has some information, of course.
You'll turn it over, Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you, Ms. Giles. So I've had conversations with our chief wastewater operator, Stephen Chica, who's here tonight. Um, also with our other wastewater operator, Tim Kingston, who's not here tonight. And I had an accidental conversation, um, with someone from Vermont Rural Water, um, when I was over visiting Ray Counter on an unrelated matter. And what I understand is basically that there are three possible, um, options for us to address this and I'm just going to give you super broad strokes and, uh, Steve can correct me or, um, expand on this or tell me anything that is wrong. Um, Steve will have the professional knowledge, she has the highest grade um, available for a wastewater system operator in Vermont. He's, he's got all the knowledge and he's been running that system since nineteen eighty-eight. So he has the institutional experience. Um, Steve and I talked long ago before the flooding events about the fact that our collection system, which is the pipes that lead to the wastewater treatment facility, they are prone to what is called infiltration and inundation. Infiltration inflow, so like there's water seeping into the pipes that are going to the wastewater facility. So this is water that really need not be treated if it could be kept out of the system, that's a big chunk of what happens. I think that the numbers, uh, that Steve reported, and here I'm going to get a little bit on thin ice, um, I think is it around two hundred thousand gallons a day is the average flow? And in a normal.
When it's dry.
When it's dry.
Over the entire year as well.
Okay, so on a dry day, a couple hundred thousand gallons a day, um, the license for the plant is around seven hundred thousand gallons per day. And during the last couple of weeks, they were processing two point one million gallons per day on three different occasions. So the plant is operating at ten times a normal dry day and at three times its licensed designed capacity. So one where, one area where we could concentrate efforts would be to replace, um, the twenty-two miles of collection system lines, uh, to prevent water from the sky coming into the pipes that has to get treated at the facility. Uh, another one that has come up in conversation is holding capacity at the wastewater treatment plant so that if all of this water comes at them, they could put it into what I will call technically, you know, uh, not the right word, but a, a holding tank, a lagoon, a pool, something like that. And release it slowly and in a controlled way back into the plant to be treated at a more normal pace. Um, and the number that was batted around off the top of somebody's head, uh, was, it would be a fifteen million gallon, piece of equipment. Fifteen million gallon structure to hang on to the water. So like a week's worth of stuff in, in heavy rain. And then the third thing that has been brought up, and this was brought up both, um, when we were going through the plant with Steve and Tim and, uh, the, the folks who are actually building, um, the, the, doing the work right now, um, is a, a sequencing batch reactor system, which basically modifies, um, using a lot of technology the way that the water is treated, um, with chemicals and flows and so on and so forth, based on how much is coming in. So it has the ability to adjust. And what we have right now is we have two really experienced operators who do the adjusting by hand. So that's, that's my understanding of three options, um, that any of them or all of them in combination could make an impact on preventing the treatment facility from being overwhelmed in a, in a high flow event.
Right.
Do we have a, do we have a co- cost estimate on any of those three or just a rough idea?
I, I know that the, the ballpark estimate that, um, Steve had shared with me and which, um, A and E confirmed at one point was, was a million dollars a mile for the collection system. So it'll be about twenty-two million.
Pipes.
Twenty-two million dollars to prevent the groundwater coming in. I don't have even order of magnitude numbers on, on a holding tank or the batch reactor.
I have a question, very used, even in my mind. How, maybe this at the risk of stemming? Um, um, like how big of a problem is this in your professional? You know, like is this like, seems like a huge problem to us, but it isn't actually a huge problem? Or is this like actually in the grand scheme, it's not that bad or it's really bad, I like?
Uh, before nineteen sixty, three hundred sixty-five days a year sewage gets in the river, one way or another.
Okay.
With no treatment. So in my estimation, not the EPA in the state.
Yeah.
My estimation is, so if you had, if you had twenty days a year, thirty days a year when it was bad and the rest of the time when it wasn't, I'd say we're still doing pretty darn good.
Okay.
Problem is, is the, the collection system was put in in nineteen thirties by guys who used hand shovels and were for twenty-five dollars a month plus food and, and place to live. Now the cost by uh, Mr. Hopkins says it's a million dollars a mile. Replace, now if we can get a big fine one that's really leaking bad and fix that and then maybe another year fix another bit, maybe in a hundred years, which is coming up on a hundred years now that the pipe's been in, maybe in a hundred years we'll have everything squared away, but everyone's got to have a great deal of patience. Because sometimes even with all the money, it still doesn't work, some still breaks at the plant. If a chemical pump goes down, I'm not there. It's not going to give enough chlorine, you're going to have bacteria go into the river. So it's not a perfect system because it was made by man. Okay?
Well put.
It was made by man, so it's going to fail no matter what, it can fail less if we put our money to reduce the water that's coming in through the pipes that have been in for a long time. That would be my best estimate. The sequencing batch reactor is good, but I heard the other day they had one in Pulteney and it failed. Because the span from normal flow to outrageous flow, sometimes you can't build something big enough.
Yeah.
And everything, and now that the floods are getting worse and worse, it's only going to get worse and worse, so it'd be just smart to start looking at the pipes.
Okay.
Because they're going to have to be replaced eventually anyway, anyway.
What did Waterbury do?
So, uh, my understanding of what the article was actually saying was that they floodproofed their facility, which is not actually our problem.
Different.
The, the reason that I think it didn't, it didn't, um, release fully treated effluent into their receiving water was that their system is built at like ten times a dry day capacity. And ours is built at like three times.
It was a different situation, but analogous.
And what has the state environmental protection agency uh, complained about? Are, are we like beyond what they consider safe?
We're like in everybody else, like the boat in everybody else. They told us years ago to make, to have an infiltration inflow study. And Mr. Hopkins will have to talk to the engineers, he decided what the next step was. It's always a series of steps, they have to study the problem and then they have to come up with some solutions and then they have to come up with some prices and then everyone's got to vote on it. It's a lengthy process.
Okay.
Just to fix this plant the way it's been going now, I think we started in two thousand nineteen because we don't have our own money.
Right.
Okay, when you have to get it from USDA, you've got to jump through all kinds of roofs.
And is the infiltration because of the material the pipes are made out of, are they?
It's because every place is a joint eventually freezing and fine over the years and everything, and then tree roots get in. And then, so if the tree roots get in and water can get into and typically pipes when they're put together, they're waterproof, not vapor proof.
Yeah.
So the roots can taste that. So you plant a maple tree that's, you know, as big as this pen in a hundred years, it's quite wide and for every inch diameter of the tree, the root spread out one foot. So you can just imagine that we need to place our trees correctly.
And that's why the next item on our agenda is a purchase order for Root X.
That is, that is, otherwise I would have to be the czar on the sewer plant and say, we're going to cut down every tree that's near any line, whether it's a building line or sewer line. So that solves that problem.
I'll sell the tree board. This is the lesser of two evils, yes.
Bernie.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Steve, all the segment six work done is frigging, about the code in that area, right? For, if you have anything outside in segment six area.
Um, it was quite, there was some roof trains that weren't put into the storm and rain system.
A minimal compared to, I mean, that, that's one great thing of segment six, it's significantly forced and done for a nickel on a dollar for us.
Um, the lines, the main lines, but not addressing the roof trains. If you, if you were to go to the treatment plant when it's raining hard in fifteen minutes, the water gets there. Now at two feet a second, being a half a mile away, you can just figure it out. It's coming from downtown state. Some people have taken it up on their own because they could put it out there before the rules came on board and all new rules, but some of it was not addressed in Route Seven segment, it somehow got forgotten or we, they didn't talk to each other or whatever.
What is a roof thing? Sorry.
On the flat roof.
Yeah.
You can't, it can't slope off, so it goes through these pipes and then it goes into the sewer line if it doesn't go into a storm drain.
That's totally different than infiltration.
That is, but the Route Seven project, there wasn't an infiltration issue. The problem with Route Seven, it was a drainage issue. So the biggest things that Route Seven did, in my opinion, are Crescent Park not flooding anymore around there because they put the proper drains in and in front, in front of Ace Hardware going down, it finally drained because they put new pipes in there because stuff was either collapsed or they put in dry wells at the ends of pipes way back. So now it's going where it's supposed to, that stuff. So that was the biggest improvement in Route Seven. The pipes were nice, but I don't think we had a problem there. The pipes are like across from the police station in that field there. And if we decide to fix the pipes, you might, might realize that there's a lot of water there now to just stay in there because the pipes in effect are draining that field. So if you fix one problem, you get another problem. So we have to be very careful and smart. However we do things, if they decide to reline the pipes, the problem with that is is you get a plastic smell for about two months. An acidic plastic smell because we evidenced that at Champlain Street when they were, when they relined some pipes there. In that pump station, we had to have the exhaust fan going all the time for two months to dissipate that. So if you have a loose connection in your house and we reline the pipe in front of your house, you're going to smell that for two months if it's not tight. The old lead, the old lead sometimes gets away and then it, you get fumes. So if you're going to do a relining job, want to do it in the summertime when people can keep their windows open, not in the middle of the winter, you got to be smart about this. Um, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, all, Claire?
I'm just wondering what kind of grant money is out there, state fed for this kind of a project?
We'll, we'll have to heavily rely on grant money. Um, it, it'll be from the USDA and from the state clean water revolving funds, which is what, those are the two sources that we're using with, um, the plant upgrades right now.
So it's, it sort of seems like, um, the weather that we've had in the last two weeks is just sort of how things will probably be to some extent. Um, I know that we spent an entire week bailing out and we had two pumps and clean front drains. We didn't any on dry well, but I don't know what else we can do. Um, so I heard from lots of people that they've all had the water released and, yeah, I'm just going to get more intense.
Bill, you had your hand up?
Uh, while we were sitting here, I just looked up fifteen million gallon tank, wasn't on eBay or anything like that, but I did find where. Yeah, I missed it. But in, in Utah, they just installed like a ten million gallon water tank and that project was eighteen to twenty million dollars.
But we're not necessarily talking about a tank, we're talking about a lagoon. It could very well be an earth instructor, it would be an entirely different.
Yeah.
Unlikely.
For untreated wastewater.
Well, but you have to realize this would be in a flooding event, which would be mostly rainwater. Because remember in a flooding event, you aren't getting, it's not like everybody uses their toilet mug. It's that you're getting all this water that shouldn't be in the system. And, and it would also be very temporary, so I think the lagoon is a legitimate thing to consider. And, and it would also be very temporary. So I think the lagoon is a legitimate thing to consider as we start to think about solutions. I, I would also, um, I, I appreciate the, the historical context because I, it's definitely true. Back in nineteen sixty, there was no treatment. But it's also true that we've learned a lot about water quality, we've learned a lot about uh, responsible ways to live with um. Um, effluent and um, you know, I, I, I went to. I did environmental engineering at Johns Hopkins and it used to be, you know, a mile of, of water with. So soft pollution, um, you know, so dilution is a solution to pollution. And we outgrew that. And so what I'd like to make sure is that. Um, we are doing um, what our generation needs to do to keep moving the ball um, along. And, and that's why I, I would like to continue looking into solutions and um. And, and, and start to get hard numbers and hard and good possibilities and then try to rustle up some funds and um. And, and do the right thing.
Yep, any other discussion on this? Uh, I guess we're gonna go to five considering a purchase order. Is anybody's? Pleasure on that. Make a motion that approved that purchase order.
One second.
Any discussion?
Well, I'd hate to cut down every tree in town, sorry.
No, so actually, no, I, 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 I'm curious, how does this get applied? Um, when this kills the roots in the town sewer line, do you apply this from the inside or is this um, on the outside?
Uh, manhole cover. You mix the part A, part B powder, pour it down. And then we have a little water tank, we add water to it, foams up. And it foams inside the entire pipe. And then it degreases the roots first and then it gets at the roots, kill the roots in the pipe.
And then it basically goes down into our sewer system and gets treated at the plant.
Right.
Cool.
Right.
Now that's, that was my concern.
It kills the roots, the stuff we used to use before we used Rudex, I think it killed the trees, okay? So this is safe.
Any other discussion? If not, uh, we'll vote to motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Item six.
Motion adjourned.
We have a second.
One second, buddy.
Undivisible. All in favor? Moving on to.
Just would like, thank you, Steve's.
Yeah, thank you, Steve.
Steve is always willing, um, during the week, uh, Steve is great at sharing information in a way that a layperson can understand.
Thank you, it was really fascinating also.
We now move to the. Uh, board, the select board meeting. I'm gonna call out the order. Uh, do we have a motion on the agenda?
I'm going to adopt the agenda, one second.
Any discussions, changes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Prove the minutes. We get a motion on that.
Motion to approve minutes.
We have a second.
A second.
Any discussion on the minutes?
I had just one question on. On page four, the second full paragraph. Toward the bottom where they're talking about the budget shortfall and maybe some budget shortfall. And it says, Mr. Hopkins was pleased with help from the town treasurer and was reminded there are adjustments that need to be made with some items. That will add to the revenue side to reduce the three hundred thousand dollars. I think that was actually. That it would reduce the shortfall to about three thousand dollars.
Two, three thousand, two, like TO.
Oh, two, three thousand dollars instead of making it look like our shortfall was three thousand.
Just didn't. And I mean, it's followed by this number will fluctuate, but I was pretty sure it never, we didn't quite that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, other than that, I'm fine with the minutes.
Okay. Anything else on the minutes? If not, we've got a motion. All those in favor, uh, except for the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I did submit my report, it's published online for, and I left about half dozen copies or so on the sign-in table. For those who are here tonight and those who are on Zoom can read it on the town website. So I thought I might just go through some updates, things that happened um, since the report was submitted and put into the packet. So for the benefit of the community, the Arnold District Road will be closed uh, this Monday, Tuesday and most of Wednesday, but not the whole day Wednesday. It will not be closed Thursday or Friday this week. So Sean's gonna have to reassess each Monday. What their plan is for the week and we will put that on the town website and um, try and get the word out as best we can for residents' convenience. Newton Road remains closed except to residents. Um, I drove Carver Street south of Nickerson Road today. It is also closed and it will stay closed until we can deal with. Uh, there's a lot of mud in there. And some tree limbs and things of that nature. And really, as you all know, it's a road that nobody really needs to be there. Take Union Street, it's safer. Um, so FEMA opened up requests for public assistance, which would be for our public infrastructure for the declared disaster. I submitted Brandon's initial request, it's been received and confirmed. And what I um, had in mind was Wagner Road, which washed into Route seventy-three. Birch Hill and North Birch Hill, Nashaby River work uh, that was done in the river on Saturday and. Monday and Tuesday. Uh, Newton Road itself and then impacts at the wastewater treatment facility. There is a threshold of thirty-eight hundred dollars per spot, so I don't think us putting gravel down on Carver. On the low end of Carver Street's probably gonna hit that, but I think all of the other ones may. Um, additional ARPA suggestions from the community were received over the weekend and I provided those to the board separately. There were three kind of um. Three, three that didn't make the board packet. Uh, for the Union Street project, I mentioned in my report that Bill and I, Bill Moore and I had met with Brian Breslin and Dave Conger from DuBois and King. About uh, inquiries that the board had about changing the scope of the work. Whether it was removal of one of the sidewalks, uh, and just doing one sidewalk instead of two. Uh, and or incorporating water and wastewater into the project. So I put uh, some of that information in my report, which was. Distilled from my notes from that meeting, uh, but they submitted a regular report uh, in writing uh, today and that's included um. With the board, with their recommendations. And lastly, um, we did create an opt-in emergency alert text messages messaging system. And I'm pleased that we've had one hundred seventy-eight people sign up to be part of that. And I, I think we'll just keep that open and people can sign up on a rolling basis and when we activate it, we activate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Sounds a great idea.
Any uh. Any questions for our town manager from the board? Heather.
Not at the moment.
Right, yeah, I got one. Property tax delinquencies, where are we at? Letters flew out or?
Oh, like the process?
Yeah.
Yeah, the process happened. So um, the May fifteenth penalties, who like makes the assessment on the penalty and then the June fifteenth. The, the letter was out that like your taxes are delinquent. And at that point, we're just dealing with people making payment plans. So we've, we've had a, a handful, I would say, of people ask for payment plans. And the goal with the payment plan is that they would meet their delinquent tax obligation within one year of starting the payment plan. The tax sale is still being built. And that's expected, uh, it's, it's in the hands of the attorney and it's expected that would be in September.
Okay, good.
How many competitions in the country?
I don't know.
Kevin, you have anything?
Nothing, thanks.
Um. What is our next step on Newton Road? As far as we have contractors that we've talked to or if we.
We've reached, we have contractors we've reached out to and nobody's yet been able to make a site visit. Um, the state was very helpful, the National Guard was here, I think I mentioned to the board in one of my daily reports during the heavy stuff. Uh, the National Guard came and their goal was to connect towns with the state. So that the state would have like kind of a situation report statewide for all the towns. So they came and asked us a bunch of questions. I had to meet with Sean Erickson, the highway foreman. And um, they reported back to the state and we heard back from the state the next day saying, you know, what do you need? And I talked with those people at the state. And they connected us with um, a contractor who was available. The contractor was from Rhode Island. Uh, he was very um, helpful in terms of what he could provide and the speed at which he could provide it. I think because um. Because the houses on Newton Road are all still accessible and because the road is easily detoured for the traveling public. I, I think I would rather try and, and get someone. Vermonti so that we're not dealing with that level of mobilization to bring up. A crew for, I mean, it's realistically that. From the end of the road at North Street to the westernmost house. Is a half a mile and it's not the full length in there that. Needs attention. So it's something less than a half a mile. So we've reached out to Casella and to Markowski multiple times. Cause multiple, cause Markowski's done that road more than once. And Harvey's in Rochester, who's did some work for us after Irene.
But of course, everybody is.
Everybody's right, right out straight.
Yeah, right, yeah. But. Well, thank you.
No.
Anything from the public? For the town manager? Alright, we'll move to the red directors. Report.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Thanks, um, when was your last water report?
I, I'm not clear what you meant. I know we had a little email exchange with, with.
Yeah, I um, was wondering, you know, the, all the sewer leakage and all the flooding, you know, how. How, how water was specifically.
So do you mean the town drinking water supply?
Town drinking water specifically.
So the town drinking water supply um, would be a Ray counter question, it's really. Okay, so it's, it's nothing that the town asks for um, from Ray. I can tell you, you know, the town's drinking water well is in a really excellently protected. Aquifer zone with a lot of natural sand filtering just because of its location. Basically off of Newton Road. So like. All this clean water uh, comes down and then gets filtered through and I, I don't have an answer for. Ray's most recent test, but I would, I don't know, Steve is kind of asking a question. Steve has to test what we put into the Nashaby River every single day that the plant is operating, which is every day. Do you know how frequently the drinking water is tested by the fire districts, Steve?
I don't know, it's once a week for the bacteria, but.
So it's maybe on a, maybe on a less frequent basis than once a day, but. Um, it's certainly been tested since the high, since the high water events.
And does that not get sent to the town?
Definitely not.
Can you ask for it?
Certainly. Any of you could also ask for it, like the, you know, it's, you, you all belong to the fire district and I belong to the fire district and.
He might answer your call.
Yeah, I got one. And I just was curious about it.
We, I mean, we will certainly, I can certainly ask, yeah.
He does have the top state, I would assume.
Right, well, they also have prudential, they also have prudential meetings.
Right.
Like this, that are really open to the public and a great place to focus questions on their process and their.
And I believe their meeting is the first Thursday. Is that right?
I don't know. Oh, there's a far potential.
I believe it's the first Thursday, I think they went back to first Thursday, and the water quality reports are available through the. Department of uh, there's water reports available online, you can look up rating reports by the week or when they've been tested.
So, so the meeting is on August third. At six thirty PM. At the fire department, which is sixty-one Franklin Street.
Yep. Right, I was assuming probably no news is good news, but there's problems, he lets down, no ID, boil notices.
So I did, uh, I dropped in on Ray one day and uh, at the, at the water department. And uh, we talked to, but he talked about the text messaging system and I said that, you know. We, we were talking about collaborating and we collaborate on metering and billing and all that kind of stuff. And we specifically talked about. You know, Ray, if you need to get out a boil your water notice, like we can use this. And he said, it was the first thing I thought of when I heard you were doing this and. And I think you're right, I think the fact that he knows that it exists, this text outreach. And he has not told me he needs a text outreach to, and, and they, they would do other things too. They would put a sign in front of the fire station, blah, 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 but. I, I would, I think it's, it's really well protected, the town's well. It's not surface water.
Any other questions?
I like to thank uh, Steve for their, I live, I'm Oscar, I live in the four seven seven new road. Last house on the right. I get everybody's water. But I just want to thank the government for their expedition's uh, response on both phases. That these uh, flood, floodwater citizens of Newton Road. And uh, I give a kudo, my kudo needs to be. Thanks for the decision-making that they made. That's all I want to say, I think.
Thank you.
Good job, man.
So for the, for the benefit of those who maybe didn't read the whole report or whatever, right? So there was. There was a heavy downpour Friday night and Saturday, we were able to get in touch with the river management people at the state. And with a contractor and we got some boulders pulled out of the river to allow more water to stay in the river. And kind of built up a little berm. And then unfortunately, that Sunday night. Another event basically took away the work that had happened. Including some driveway work that Oscar had done, uh, just with his own personal tractor and the town had done to try to. Open up culverts for all those, but there's about. Ten or ten, ten houses, I think, left with people living uh, up and down.
I would say if it wasn't for the decision-making they made the first, that Saturday, the second storm. In my, in my humble opinion, I'm not a water engineer, but the, the amount of water that came over the next storm, right? Was probably twice the water that, I made it this. The water guy, I forget his name. The flow meter probably there, there's a whole lot more water that came over. And if they didn't put that berm up, I think I can only imagine what the damage would have been. It would, it was really immense. Uh, I watched it. First hand, so again, thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Um, also for news, which I neglected to write in my update report. Um, we did get a report that the Newton Road pump station, one of the pumps um. Has melted was the term that from, I, I think from constant running. So it's um, it's a duplex system, so there's still one pump running and the pump that has failed was under warranty and will be replaced. But that's just another of those, it's, that's one of those impacts that like you don't see. Above the road kind of thing or along the driveways, it's deep in a well there, but that will, that will be addressed as part of our FEMA. Claim, if, if there's extra work that's needs to be done beyond the warranty.
Yeah, thank you.
So the last sample on our water was June fifteenth. And it's online.
Not that one, I saw it, thank you.
Anything else for the town manager?
Um, thank you, Seth. We had a very interesting interview with the Christian Science Monitor and the article, I thought it would be. Good for you to get an office of that, of that conversation that we had with journalist that Cecil and Dylan. We were involved in and to look at how well Brandon survived this horrible devastation um, past week compared to others. Towns um, throughout the state, but if you can give a time.
Sure, so on the thirteenth, which was, you know, after most of Vermont had its worst impacts. From the big rain on the tenth, right? So like on the thirteenth. We had a couple of journalists from the Christian Science Monitor in Boston come to Brandon to check out. Um, and, and they were sent to us uh, by the folks at the state who said, you know, Brandon has done a lot of work to try to mitigate. Flooding and hazards from high rain events and so forth. So they came and. Uh, we looked at some pictures of Irene and we looked at the culvert together and uh, Todd Cooley led us into his home down there. Below the waterfall and, and we, we had some great kind of under, they had some great understanding of like what the town has done. Um, in terms of a matter of initiative. It turned out that that was like the day that we were kind of feeling like we had escaped. And then the next day was, you know, Friday night was, was the, the first kind of big impact to Brandon really. Other than the, the roads that often will flood. In the south and the west, you know, the Pearl Street, Union Street, kind of Carver, Carver Street, Champlain Street, those, those things get overtopped. So um. Yeah, it was, it was a good talk. The article was, was well written. They were impressed with Brandon. They were totally taken by Brandon, I would say. They were very charmed. They stayed for lunch, they, they um, they had just wonderful things to say. It was a sunny day, the flags were out, I mean, it was. It was, it was like a whole different world. Yeah, yeah, it was, it was like Potemkin.
That, it really uh, it was a heartwarming, you know, and count the. What, what has happened in Brandon post hot hurricane Irene and how the town came together for the bond. To uh, build the culvert through town and has, and saved our town. I'm thinking maybe three or four times already and um, and how we. And the community will work together despite maybe local differences or, or, you know, all kinds of differences that could might have, but. And for the greater good of the community, we work together. And for the greater good of the community, we work together and, and. Made that big effort and added um, the expertise on the flood for that time that centered in that direction and. Still here today, right? And so I um, I guess it was just a wonderful experience to be able to recount the history of how that came about and, and. I would largely have. There certainly has been damage, but um.
And even with the irony of, you know, the flooding. Up in the northeast part of Brandon and really the whole eastern third, like all the steep dirt roads like Birch Hill and so on and so forth, like they all had some. Washing out on the edges. Um, a- all it really means is that, okay, we've protected the downtown and now we need to turn our attention to the rest of our community. And figure out how we can best protect the other parts of Brandon that, that weren't necessarily, you know, directly. Benefiting from the, the construction of the culvert in the center.
Anything else for?
Um, I noticed on the end of your um, report, there was um, uh, for our awareness of the select board um, mention of the chief of police um. Making plans for um, a cruiser.
Yes.
And I um, I would like to see us address that in an agenda item. Well before he actually purchases or makes plans to purchase, because I think there are. Are two levels of discussion that can go on there. One is. Whether we want to continue to be one of the few towns that provides a vehicle to every police officer in town. And the second, of course, is that um. It's very important that um, to me, that he understand the green fleet um, policy as, as he goes forward in um, in looking into the next cruiser. Absolutely, and so um.
Yeah, I actually, cause I had a question about that where it says he has sourced these to purchase possibility. To me, that sounded like he'd already found something.
He's identified something to buy.
Yeah.
I, I haven't jumped on it. I, and I won't jump on it, like you'll, you'll be the ones who get it, you know? It's, it's basically something that he. Has kind of in, in the. Two and a half months, whatever I've been there. He's kind of just, when he comes in for his meeting, it's always one item he wants to let me know is like the fleet conditions. Um, among the cruisers.
Yeah, I think um. As Mr. Viles was saying. I know that we have this green fleet policy where. To the extent feasible and economically and practically. EVs are something to at least look at and so I was just a little. Sort of when he has sourced this, he's, he looked at the possibilities. And so, I mean, um, I think having it as an agenda item where the chief could come and speak to us and tell us what is going to happen.
Great, thanks.
What we budgeted for?
Oh, they took it out. Just the path themselves with that.
Um, I'm not sure that was necessary.
Hey, we took two hundred thousand out of the reserve.
It wasn't to pat anybody on the back. Uh, we did this to save the town money and not take money that we didn't need at the time.
But that's the purpose of a capital plan.
And we're getting a capital plan and that's.
It's alright, we're done, we're done.
This year.
We're gonna stop this discussion at this time. Anything else for the town manager? Move on to. The rec director's report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Brandy Carnival starts Thursday, like twenty seven, five P M. Thanks to sponsors, Rutland Regional Medical Center, the Carter Insurance, Insurance Agency, Nifty, Thrifty, Olivia's Croutons, Solar Fest. Rapid Celebration Rentals, Pocket Pest Control, Wyman's Timber Harvesting Services and Dundance. Free entertainment includes wrestling, random idol singer, Vermont Trivia Championship, rock and roll art show, the Aaron Adet Band. Beyond the Barn, Petting Zoo, Circus Camp Demo and Performance Arts four H Show. Miller Music will provide the rides and midway, always free to enter and depart. When the middle fall planning for the following youth activities, football for grades one through eight, soccer for PK through six, cheer for fourth through eight. First Lego League through six through eight, disc golf for grades one through six. Kickball for grades four through six, volunteers needed, please reach out with your interest. Table tennis has moved to Tuesday nights at North Campus and is set to resume from the summer break in mid-August. Pickleball is looking to add. Said another day, looking to add many more days to their uh. It's a very popular sport, the fastest growing sport in history of sports. There was two million pickleballers like. In twenty nineteen, there's fifty million pickleballers now, it's. Dance classes for adults will be offered this fall, including a west coast swing class as well as some traditional dance style with Miss Michaela. I met with Nick Stark from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission regarding the ramp, the regional asset mapping project. The grant work that will ultimately see Brandon have a comprehensive events calendar. Uh, Brandon's, Brandon's specific site will serve as the template for the other twenty-six towns that will feed into the master site that highlights the regional. Regions recreational assets and events. Pavilion Restrooms at Estabro proceed to paint job thanks to a youth volunteer. Nate. From buildings and grounds with the help of higher ability workforce training person has spruced up the red storage building at Estabro, including repairing two vandalized windows. A second week of summer camp at Grand Bay started today. The Into the Wild camp is on the lobby popular under the circus. Tent from last week. There's only five spots left for our three, grant funded by First of Vermont Robotic Campus starts on July thirty first. Our formal information can be accessed at uh. Then right dot com. I also wanted to talk about uh, just generally sort of related, the town hall, it's in the town manager's report uh. You know, we had some damage with the tornado activity we had last Thursday, tree knocked into the chimney cap, poked a hole in the roof. Water all over the place and the. I don't even know what to call it, the, the godfather of this building. The, the person who, again, if you could live here, you would, Dennis Martin did tremendous work. Keep it dry and clean in there, was here before we could get here, cleaned this place up. Multiple times throughout the, the weekend before we were able to black diamond here to do the repairs, so Dennis deserves everybody's praise once again, because. We went above and beyond to make sure that the building stayed dry and. Little damage a little bit of the library. Right, not books, it's t-shirts.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for? Or rec director? Cecil?
No.
Ryan?
Yeah, I got one. You mentioned briefly last meeting about this uh, rec commission.
Yeah, so what I'm looking to do is for a long time, the rec has operated with. Volunteer work only from commissioners and. Coaches in particular, um, other rec programs pay their coaches. I was. Thinking about uh, establishing commissioners for each sport that would get a stipend for each season to sort of be the. Head person looking over some of the scheduling stuff. Um, the rec director would certainly still be involved, but it'd be. Starting with a trial run, we have, we've had an unpaid football commissioner who'd been. Phenomenal fundraiser for twelve years here, so many kids thankfully was around for a long time and we had raised our program up. And so looking at him and looking at his sock commission for this year.
That is, is that in the budget?
It's not in the budget, it's something where we, we, I tack on a ten dollar tax to each one of the. Each one of the uh, registry registrants to palpate.
So it would increase fees from one to, I'm, I'm just forgetting what it was, it was like forty bucks maybe?
Forty-five to fifty-five dollars.
So I guess, uh, I have a couple of questions. One question is, do we simply not have enough? Parents who can volunteer their time for things like this?
So we do have, we have, so we have plenty of volunteer coaches. I guess that's sort of next level as far as the organization piece, I feel like. Isn't direct instruction, it's, you know, this organization piece, uh, you know, being a sort of first line defense before somebody raises the level of. The rec director, um.
I could. So I can get firsthand experience, so like when we, my son did soccer. Say there's a rainy day, is there practice, is there not? Each individual coach makes that decision, maybe, maybe not, it's not always perfectly clear. And so you wind up with some kids at the field because maybe the coach did some phone calls, but missed somebody and if you had, and like. Bill is trying to run in twenty directions because it's not only soccer running. There's like other things, so if you've had somebody in charge of the soccer, it would be somebody who would actually like be able to, I'm assuming, be able to be like. I'm in charge of soccer, so and so's practice is canceled, make sure that the list is put together, otherwise it's volunteer coaches. So that parents are like ticked off that.
Right, and I guess.
Like you're not gonna keep your coaches long.
But I guess what I'm wondering is, I mean, if we, we can find volunteer coaches, but sometimes there are parents whose children are involved in these things. Who don't feel like they have the ability to be a coach, but they may have the administrative ability to be commissioner, so I mean. I'm just wondering if it's actually something that we would need to stipend or if there may be our parents out there. Who would love to do it for free because their kids are involved in the program and it's just. They didn't feel like, well, I, like, I could never be a soccer coach, but I can definitely do a phone treat, you know, thing like that.
Interesting idea. I say again, I certainly lean heavily on volunteers, you know, throughout the eleven years that I've been doing this. Again, I've always, you know, thought about the fact that, you know, like, you're about other rec programs, people do that, but again, if there are volunteers that want to be those people and they have the. Is they act really good. Deal with somewhat angry parents at times or, or, you know, you know, I would definitely consider it, certainly, I mean, I. Have no problem with that.
I know it's just too bad that uh. I, I know almost everybody here at the table that have had kids here. We've all been in that situation where we volunteered a lot of our time. For our kids and it's pretty sad that um. These parents now can't. Do some of the same volunteering, whether it be as Cecil said, as an administrator or. Our culture, whatever the case might be and um. I understand it, I understand it, all the lives are, everybody's life is busy, but um. My, my kid, my kids uh. We, we had, we had quite busy lives when we were growing up and, and. We had to make a lot of sacrifices so that um. Our kids could play sports and I, I think that. It's something that needs to be looked at.
We have a very generous community and, and, you know, I, there's. You know, it's a, it's a matter of perception, right? You know, you guys were busy and these younger people are busy. There's, there's this gap, this generational gap that exists with volunteers and like. People love to, Seth and I talked about this a lot, and people want to volunteer. I don't think they don't want to volunteer, they still go haller. And so like we, you know, as a rec department can do a better job of outreach and making people feel, organizations generally can do a better job of making people feel comfortable like. This is coming to select board meeting and, you know, friendly face, you guys are essentially volunteers and, you know, making sure people feel like they can be involved, you know, so I think like, you know, opening the doors. Up so people can feel like they can be involved, they're not. Ex, you know, excluded, that they can be a part of the group and so that, you know, that piece.
Well, and that's why I was thinking maybe, you know. For those volunteers who would like to be involved with their kids with the activities, but you know, it can't be dance instructors or getting the coaches or getting things, but can do administrative work. Can do the phone calls, can do the scheduling and stuff like that. There may be someone who wants to do that.
Yeah. Um, there was also some discussion about how to get these surrounding communities to kind of. Help them some of the loan. Um, I don't know, are they, do they pay the same fees or?
They pay, they pay, right now it's an extra nine dollars if you're outside.
Extra nine dollars.
Where?
I just have a quick question, not having kids, I'm not really aware of um. How much recreation is focused on the older teens, right, fifteen, sixteen?
We do not do a lot of older teens, older teens, uh, we, we've offered, uh, we've offered like the esports. Um, you know, trying to capture teens and these difficult things, especially without a s-. You know, space for them to recreate and, and. Send that, yeah, net, or, but you know, like. Yeah, deal with teens is, it's wild, I mean, I worked at it, I worked at it, I worked at it all that program and. Right away, the one thing I learned is you have to have, you know, tin ears, like you have to meet the kids where they're at, and if you shirk at the first, you know. Colloquial thing that they say that you're going to lose them. And so like that kind of skill set is, you know, tough to develop in volunteers and. But yeah.
Maybe we can talk about that, because I think we're losing a, a lot of older kids on. Stories out of Otter Valley, uh, this year have been pretty horrendous. In terms of the level of violence that has been there and uh, there seems to be. No place for kids to go that are a little bit older, they may not grow. And I just think we should take a look at what we can do and figure out a space, maybe just stopping, I don't know, but I would love to talk to you about that.
Like with you on that, the, and, and you know, into Otter Valley's credit, you know, they are working on trying to create teen clubs after school and. As a. A father of a sixteen-year-old, you know, she sat out. You know, like it's that sort of thing, like you gotta move those things away from. And I would love to see the development of our.
And at least when you get to that high school. Junior high, high school. Time, the sports end is. Taken care of for the next part.
And we offer first Lego League, do ninth grade for, for kids and we partner with Otter Valley on, on various operates.
No, I think you do a great job. I'm just asking about those older kids. Where I see uh, a lot of kids being lost out there.
Anything else for the rec director, Tim?
No, thank you.
Anybody from the public? We're gonna move on. Oh, Bernie?
Just one quick thing. For all this conversation after the report, I just was just, I often say that. Um, we all remember that we came within two weeks of losing the funding for segment six, literally within two weeks. So we give credit to our reps at that time and got the town manager and said. If this doesn't get done, we're, we're pulling the funding. And. Think about what this would be like if we hadn't got that done. At the same time, very similar time. The discussion was whether or not we were going to even have a rec, rec program. And it came within inches of not having a rec program. And we managed to gain to give Bill a fifty percent job as rec director. And. Not too long after that decided to, let's pass on economic development also can do. But that fifty percent rec director has created. That lengthy statement he just read. And with Pauline now with this, with Pauline too. I, I lived in my whole life, I've never seen anything like the scope or rec that is available for this world. Including now old people like us.
I'll say, Bernie, I, I second that and. The generation of parents like myself who have grown up in Vermont and, in Brandon. And we were so excited just to have a coffee shop at that bookstore and that wasn't even until I was like almost in college. Um. Back when it was. The first breaks carriage, um, but. Now, like all of us, when we drop our kids off places, we're like, holy smokes, like, don't you wish there was wrestling? Don't you wish there was an animal show? Our kids like, like you drop your kids off to just different, the library has more stuff, it used to, I can remember going to like just to read one. But now there's like. Library bread, people have a written menu, dinner menus every week, like, just all that stuff is such a change. I, I wholeheartedly agree, Bernie. It's really different and having lived here thirty-seven years, I. It's, it's remarkable and every parent of my generation says the same thing.
Anything else for our rec director? You're amazing. Want to move on to a public comment? Start with the board first.
No, thank you.
Ryan, no. And next we're gonna go to. Our representative.
Thank you, uh, I have a few, few comments. So, uh, last. So this began a pretty to uh, be part of a conversation with the governor's office and all of the uh, folks who are doing emergency management for the state. And the biggest takeaway uh, that, that. With the message that they wanted, everyone wanted to alter things home to our constituents with. Call. Get, got into a text, got into call two-on-one. Um, so that if there's any damage at all to your home or to your property, it's really important that it's good property, but maybe we have a lot of. Homes that were flooded in this town, so we had damaged our, our yard or our roads or our driveways or culvert. That those um, damages be reported to two-on-one, it's important so that. The state can show FEMA exactly how much money was, uh. How much damage was uh, occurred in our state, the overall funding will increase so we can uh, help the. Our, our, our residents, our homes. So, so they can get any damage at all, um. No matter how small, step for four thousand two-on-one.
Does that include, I've heard of a couple of people who have said they've lost their hot water heaters or like. Any, any, like the basement stuff.
It is your basement, which I had absolutely anything and it's just, they're, they're trying to get a tally of exactly how much damage was done. I'm, I'm not sure how that. I'm I'm not sure how that, I think, I don't know, we go to one, I have done it to one, like I had no damage. But I think just putting your, I I don't know how much information you need to put, you just put need to put that you said there has been damage. Um, and then the other uh, is the flood issues is that. Uh, tomorrow, or this week, later this week, I'll be in Montpelier for uh. House Commerce Committee is only meeting to talk about how we can help businesses. At the current time, there's only SBA loans that they can be given to businesses. Uh, it looks like uh, we found the the. Hours of B have found an equity twenty million dollars in the state coffers that we use to help. Uh, businesses dig out of the mess and that in the real uh. We've heard stories and everything. How do all of the states that. We're going with our businesses because people just can't can't see a way out. Um, so anyway, so I'll be in Montpelier and talking and I think we have the. The treasurer and the attorney general and uh, government staff, agency, community development, uh, Kimber Palmer. And those are all the people who are involved with this uh, in a health form in the state. Plan to help businesses throughout the state. And um. The last thing I just wanted to note that I've been uh, appointed to a a short term committee on rural economic development and. Uh, we can initially looking at our funds, how we can continue working across bringing our funds to our accounts and um, actually be working on that this. Fall and perhaps later in the fall to see how we. Take those money and even buy a hatch in our small, small, kind of small alert house.
Thank you. Now open up any other public comments from. The public here on anything that's not on the agenda.
I'm Sandy Mayo. Of course, I want to say, sitting here, it's been an education. I haven't been here for a while and and. This whole, this whole catastrophe we've been through for the last few. I sit right on the floor. And we went through, I my reflection is all totally four floods. And I watched the culverts every day. And I can only congratulate the people that got that real push through. I mean. I I wouldn't have, I'm sure it wouldn't have flooded, my face wouldn't have flooded, but it didn't have to because the fear that it would. Was so great to see the power of the water that came over the falls. In those flood and and the worst one was actually the one Sunday night. Because I can look across the river where the concretes are for the culverts. And then there's this whole like. Um, curve that goes around below that brick house. It's all stone and then there's grass. So you can see how high the water is relative to the grass actually. And it was the highest, that was the highest of all floods. And it was just um. It was just powerful. I just, it was just powerful, it was just unbelievable. I I would look out the window and say to the dog, we're gonna pack the car in. And then I'd go, well, how are you gonna get out of her lot if this is going on here, you know? But it was a tremendous experience and and every day, um. My friends and I would say. Thank Brandon for putting in the culverts. It was, it was just, it was just, it saved us. And then the other thing I want to skip over to recreation and what we should do, I have to say. I turned my garage into this huge schoolhouse window and that's where I paint. And there's a staircase that goes up to the sidewalk. And there's a little gate that's locked and I, you know, you shut it, you lock it. And every day I'm painting this kid. He's fourteen. He's on a bike. And I try to catch him every time and yell, I can't ride your bike down the staircase. So I think some kind of a a bike track. Because I mean, he has a little friend, but his friend is scared.
Oh, we've seen it, Sandy.
So, and then I have to bring up a real stat back. I am disgusted with this library, I have to tell. I'm disgusted with with the crisis we've just been through. The roads, the sidewalks, and just listen to all you people talk about. Getting funds and getting grants and it's like, when do we know our reach financially? We're a small town. I look at the Isling Library in Middlebury, I look at our library, I'm an advocate for libraries. No toys about it. I quit college before I was finished. It took me a few years and I went back to college. I went to a masters. I'm a PhD now. I believe in education. And libraries are where we can get it. At the same time. What is our reach here? Someone told me we're two million dollars over budget. And we're only three or four months into the, into the uh, renovation. Can we just like consider pausing? And getting some fresh eyes to look at this plan and to possibly try to. Retrofit it, make it a little smaller, make it a little more practical. I mean, I remember when we talked about it, we talked about how we need um, access. We need your backing, but from there, we went to the statler adopted. This is a small town and I can say without even doing data here, sixty percent of the town at least makes less than twenty five thousand a year. And you may say, we're not going to pay for it. No way. I'm sorry, this is kind of a situation before, we need to have our financial belts tightened. I I I wish we would just like pause. And get some other people to look at that plan. I went over to your house, I saw the plan. I knew right from the deck though, that was way over the top. And now we're two million dollars. We haven't even, we haven't even got off the ground yet. So I gotta say, I'm just really, really upset with this whole. This whole thing, I I it's hard to know what is real about it and what is just like a fantasy. I I really. I really wish you people can take some time out and think about it.
I'm I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop a tear because number one is. Uh, there's nothing that we as a select work can do about that um. Cause they they do have their own board, but we do have a couple of directors. Here and I'm gonna, I am gonna go out and I'm gonna let them make a quick response. On that if they'd like to.
Um, David Roberts, president of the board of the library. I would say I invite you to attend our board meeting and ask as many questions and dig into. Uh, the plans and look at the challenges that we've had and faced and overcome. Um, and that would be the appropriate place to do that. Our board meetings are. Second, third Wednesday of the month at four thirty at the library.
I find it interesting that that's the case, then why are you here? Why is the library here? They're not involved.
I'm here because I wanted to give an update. It's really positive update.
And and we've got that. We've got that. Down a couple of lines from now on, I'm sure that they will address it at that point in time. Anything else on public discussion?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to let you, it's a whole different note now. Um, I'm participating with other clerks around the state in the um, Lake Champlain Dragon Boat Festival. And we're raising funds for the McClure Miller Respite House. Um, so I encourage anybody to make a donation if you'd like. Um, it's really fun. Our boat is named Freedom and Unity after the Vermont motto. Um, and we're gonna be paddling on August sixth, so this is our last board meeting. So if anybody would like to make a donation, you can go to Dragon Heart. I think it's just Dragon Heart Vermont. Or I have it linked on my Facebook page too. You can find it there and. It's a really good cause. It's really fun. It's um, it all started as part of a breast cancer. Survivor thing and it's really expanded and they, we give thousands and thousands of dollars annually and. It's a lot of fun to attend too, if you want to come and watch. That's it for me. Thanks.
Yeah, I would just uh, all of us soon that if you've never seen a dragon boat race, they're really fun to watch. They're. Fun to be in, but they're fun to watch.
Anything else on public comment? Now we're gonna move on to appointment, uh, to appoint a moderator. Lieutenant Brandon.
Mr. Hopkins.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I submitted a a memo to the board outlining uh, some reasons why Brandon might. Why the board might want to appoint a moderator for the town and why I believe the board might want to consider Bill Moore for that position.
Okay. Looks anybody's.
Yeah, I I've read this and I um, I make a motion that we appoint Bill Moore to be um, moderator. Uh, for a term ending with annual town meeting twenty twenty four.
Do we have a second? Any discussion?
Um, thank you to Bill.
I think Bill does a great job. Did we put it out to the public?
Well, we we had an election.
An election.
Oh.
And and he he uh, even though he was not a candidate, so it was an all write-in election. There were no candidates who were on the ballot. Bill had the most number of votes. Yeah.
I love, no, I I actually, I love, I love my, I love the stimulating conversation, trying to bring people together, that's why I moderate.
Great.
Uh, so I guess we're gonna vote to motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Close. Seven, MPM resolution. Mister Hopkins.
So, Mr. Chair, this is something for the Forestdale Connector path that Bill Moore had actually spearheaded and if you'd. If you'd allow, perhaps you could speak to it.
I know.
Thank you. Yeah, so the uh, the the Forestdale Brandon uh, connector scoping study uh, there is money in the budget for. FBI Department project manager. And RPC is willing to do it uh. Who has an amazing resume. Um, and is willing to do it and the money's built into the budget of this scoping study that he has approved that you funds for. I think we'll assist with the process. And much more than any more of.
Any questions from Reggie Moore from the board?
Said a slight comment, so I just wanted to let the public know, so you know, we don't, we have a town attorney, we don't have a staff attorney. We have uh, planners at the Regional Planning Commission who are willing to do stuff for us so that we don't. Have to have a staff planner here in Brandon. So it's basically a way. That they've regionalized planning, like a lot of services are being talked about, you know, being provided in a more regional multi-town approach. Because none of the towns can afford to have. A staff attorney, a staff planner, a staff engineer. We don't have that anymore. We use an engineering firm. So it's just in that same model and we use the Regional Planning Commission, which is a not-for-profit enterprise, you know. And so I think we're getting excellent value for money and good professional advice and input and management from them. Um, so I I think that this is a great model for Brandon.
So this person would sort of like. Uh, coordinate that process.
No, and I I've read Stephanie's application. We've worked with her before and she's amazing and has. You know, my husband's treating her, she's like, oh yeah, she's doing a little transportation work. So I. Well, so I would definitely move to um. Uh, appoint. Point Stephanie and our RBC to be there.
And I second that.
We'll open it for discussion. Anything from the. Public at all? Anything from the board? If not, we go to motion. Second in, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. I just have it. Library grant resolution. Mister.
Roberts.
Uh, I think we lost that.
Oh.
Uh, Mr. Chair, so the grant resolution is just to take the next step of what the board voted to do when it made its ARPA award of one hundred thousand dollars to the library. Uh, this is how we're making the agreement that we're gonna participate in the grant that way and the library will be the beneficiary from that. Our vote that the board made.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, so the board voted, I don't remember the date, um, at a previous meeting, a meeting or two ago. The the select board voted to award. One hundred thousand dollars of the town's ARPA award to the library for their project. And that hundred thousand dollars is being used by the library to match another hundred thousand dollars from the state. Is it state library board? Or no?
Community development.
CBDG, yeah, yeah. So this is just the kind of formalizing paperwork that will turn the vote into action.
Uh, I need to. You've got anything you'd like to discuss on that or?
Uh, no, I don't have anything related to that.
Okay.
I I just wanted to give a little bit of an update to the library, if that's okay. If I do it here, is that fine?
Yep.
Sure. So um. Construction began today. Uh, Mayor and Brain first day was on the ground today. Uh, we had a construction meeting. Um, which is exciting. Um, we were delayed, you know, we removed asbestos um, a couple of months ago. We were delayed by division in store preservation for a couple of months. Because faded like our sprinkler layout and they made us redo that, which um, cost thousands of dollars of consulting fees. And architecture fees and engineering fees. But we've done that and they're happy and they've given us the go ahead of the start. The certificate of occupancy, we've got a schedule today, the certificate of occupancy uh, for us to move back in is scheduled February twenty eighth. So that's a great um, um, that's a good target date for us to to be able to move in. We won't move in directly. It'll take us a couple of months. One of the things that we did to save money is we removed all the shelving, uh, new shelving. And we're just gonna repurpose all the old shelving, so it's gonna take us several months. To figure those things out and to rebuild shelving and um. Putting kitchen cabinets and all the those kind of things, so um, it'll take us a couple of months to move in. Um, the um, the other thing that's really exciting is. Uh, Senator Welch called Molly um, a couple of weeks ago and she said, and he said that we. Uh, the Senate, the federal, the Senate has approved um, a a million dollar grant to the library. Um, it's through the construct, the congressional directed spending. Uh, he also said not to uh, pop the port yet because the Senate has approved that. The House is not, and the House will vote on the bill, the budget, federal budget, which this is in. Uh, in November to February timeframe. So um, that means that um, what that'll do is if you'll recall, we phase it out. And that'll pay for a phase three, which is the attic and the basement we do. Uh, and some of the restoration of the grill work in the front and some other things, random things that you know. Will need to be done and we took out of the project. So that'll happen in twenty twenty five at the earliest. Because we can't spend the money to get the money and this process takes a while. So that's really good. Um, and then the last thing I would say is, I just wanna. P back of what Bernie said, I think, you know, this town has invested heavily, uh, this this board and the people of this town have invested heavily in this. In this community, uh, starting with the culvert in section six. Uh, the rec department and I think the library is a crucial part of that. I think the library is one of the core zones and we do senior outreach and we do teen outreach. We have teen teen groups that meet on a weekly basis or a weekly basis and we obviously. Have uh, a lot of kids in our uh, or in our, our building. Um, you know, our door count, which includes staff and everybody, is about fifty thousand people in here. Uh, that's a significant amount of people uh, in that library and if you don't. Uh, you don't see that, it's because we're busy. Working and um, we're, we're working hard to serve this community. And um, I think this community is better because of the library and we have grown as the community has been out there.
Thank you.
David, could you go back to February twenty eighth when you're gonna move in? What does that exactly mean?
That means we get a certificate of occupancy from the 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 the, basically, I think it's the fire marshal and says. Everything is good and you can move back in.
What if everything is good? You move this small library from here back in there in February of twenty four?
No, we will take a couple of months to move, um, so we'll probably open the library back in the new space sometime in the.
Correct. Right, but you're gonna start February, you've got to be okay with the CO to start moving back in the. Right, but you're gonna start February. You've got to be okay with the C O to start moving back in the certificate that the certificate of occupancy that you've been dealing with your fire. And tell, yeah.
The project is, you know, livable, everything, everything is livable and we have permission.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? On the resolution?
Just um if I could just do a shout out to the library staff. I have been in there many times and watched the staff care for children and adults both. Usually we um would have no other place to go. Sometimes it's food, sometimes it's comfort, sometimes it's loneliness. Homeless folks, something they want to do their work and reach out to the computer services. And I think they do a phenomenal job, but um being the heart of this town and it is something that we realize they they can be more fair in and out than for certain of interaction and positive mother relationships.
Anything else? None being heard? We need a vote on which.
Yeah, I make a motion that we um we sign this grant agreement resolution.
We got a second?
I'll second that.
Well, any just any more discussion?
I'd say one additional positive thing is that um like thinking back to my very recent parenting experience, a lot of the friends that my children have, like the other family friends have been people that you meet at the library who are like I just had to get the heck out of the house. I don't even care. I'm here till five. They close at five. I'm here till and just the, I think that Claire is is absolutely right. And if you spend a lot of time in library, I have seen everything from home health visits there when you weren't maybe not feeling safe in a home. And it feels very um non-judgmental and it doesn't feel like, well, you have to go to this yapping place. It's just no one's going to library instead. And what the visitor is thinking is because I don't feel safe in your home, but I don't want to tell you that. Um, or some other reasons. I mean, there are potential other reasons, but um it it really, I think for the young families in town, I think that the library is a great place to make a lot of those connections before your kids are old enough for you to meet the parents at the sides of the T-ball field or whatever. And when you're just like, my kid skipped their nap and if I'm home, they're gonna scream. And if I show up, Joanie will hold my baby for ten minutes. It's it's priceless.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Consider working group for personnel policy revisions.
Mister Chair, um I brought to the board's attention a potential personnel policy revision that the board might want to consider. And um while I was working up a memo of other considerations, I stopped myself and remembered that I'm not a select board member anymore and that the select board should be actually drafting policy and I should be available to advise and so forth. So my recommendation would be that the board consider appointing a working group of two to address the personnel policy in a comprehensive way, and I'll be happy to assist them however it might be helpful.
Okay, uh what's the board's? Pleasure on this. We'll vote off. Any suggestions? We'll go start with Cecil.
And be happy to volunteer to, you know.
Anybody else Heather?
I would be happy to. I just don't think I'm the best suited for it. Um, but I'm happy to.
Right, any suggestions? Nope, Tim?
Um, I was gonna give a similar um statement, so maybe between the three of us, we can figure which two would um go well, unless you wanna be involved in that.
No, I mean, I think it's uh I think between Cecil and
Whoever.
Yeah, why don't we have a conversation afterwards and then two of us can come out and um Okay. No, no, that's fine. Um, that's fine. I'm just trying to that's what I was just trying to defer to, because if if it was something you wanted to do, I'm I don't need to do it. But if you um what I heard in your statement was that you might be happy for me to do it.
Yes.
Yeah, good. I I'd be happy to do it.
Great. And and for what is worth, I have a lot of experience reading and um explaining to people personnel policies and so we're together.
Great.
Between the definitely.
Just a quick question, are these um need to be privy to our attorney before they're signed off on because of state law?
So that the town's past practice is to take a Vermont League of Cities and Towns model policy, which has been written by their staff attorneys. And it's a template kind of thing. And so that's what we usually have done. We haven't generally involved the town term.
Okay, but you're so you're going in and then kick out things that are missing or needs to be updated.
So what the the existing personnel policy, which I think was twenty nineteen, is a V L C T model policy that the select board um tweet, you know, and basically it's almost, I won't say it's a template. It's not like a fill in the blank with the name of your town. But it's it's not far removed from that when the league gives you a model policy. So there was nothing in the league's model policy that was discarded. Um, there may have been an appendix added on for a salary schedule or this or that kind of thing. And I would anticipate that that would be the same process that the working group would start.
I mean, and basically Claire, what we learned was that there are parts of our personnel policy that require a little more clarity. I mean, so we're not going to go in and like
Right.
completely change our personnel policy or something like that. There's just a couple of things that the last go around just need to be tightened up.
Yep.
Any other discussion on this? I don't think we need a motion or anything run under it.
I would.
All right, um. Can we get a motion? I'll make a motion to a point. Cecil and Tim. Who uh revised personnel policy with the help of the gentleman. Oversight of the town manager. You have a second?
Second. Go ahead.
I'll second.
All those in favor sign, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now we're gonna move on to discussion with ARPA suggestions from the community. And presentation by Brandon Essential Care. We'll start with that.
Good evening. Thank you for uh I'm Reverend Sarah Lawson. Good night. And I am
Sarah, if I can stop you for just a second, just for so the people on Zoom, it's kind of hard to hear. If you guys wanted to come forward and talk a little louder that way.
Sure. Thanks.
Um, we are we are here. Uh Barbara White and I are here and Julie Demery in spirit from Utah uh also joins us. Uh, we're here as representatives of the Brandon Essential Care Network. And um if you uh will indulge me to um describe what Brandon Essential Care Network is for just a minute or two, uh because not everyone is familiar with us. Uh, Tia Polina, uh Polino, the director of the Rutland County Free Clinic began uh the Brandon Essential Care Group about two years ago in hopes that local community service providers and helping volunteers might better connect with each other to focus our efforts to offer essential care to Brandon area residents. Um, we are not a registered or certified organization ourselves or a service provider, but an informal network of caring service providers and residents. And we seek to uh support the health and welfare of persons in the Brandon area and especially those who find themselves underserved or isolated in our community. Um, and just quick goals that we focus on are to help increase awareness of the various existing community resources already available to our residents. To make sure uh that we continue to raise awareness about what's out there. Help to connect families or individuals who express a need for assistance with existing services and resources. Connect those who want to help their neighbors with those who have a need for assistance. And also to use our growing awareness to help identify where there may be service and resource gaps. And seek to partner with others to help address those gaps. Where we uh where we can do so. Uh, the meetings, we meet once a month and our meetings have afforded us uh many opportunities for conversation um um about how to envision possibilities of how we might continue to strengthen the residents of this town economically and socially. Um, especially as we continue to recover from the effects of the pandemic. And uh the different landscape that we've all have needed to adjust to and will continue to do so. And so um, we found that uh Mister Hopkins July twelfth invitation in the Brandon Front Porch Forum uh for suggestions for the ARPA funds, um the usage of of these remaining ARPA funds to be a timely catalyst for us to to share with you an idea that seems to keep circling back in our in our group's conversations. And that is uh the idea of a of the formation of a CDC, a community development corporation, uh which is a five oh one C three to support um a variety of community development endeavors, um whether they be economic, uh social, uh some for uh supporting uh business entrepreneurs, um working families, um education opportunities in in town. Um, so I am not aware, I'm relatively new to the community. I'm not aware if there is a structure uh in town that functions in the way that I have seen CDC's function in other communities where I have lived and served. And so I am uh inviting us and uh Julie Demery has done a fair bit of research and has a passion for this sort of work and uh so she would be a great uh conversation partner. Uh, but uh to consider whether or not uh it would be a suitable use of ARPA funds to to help us develop a CDC uh within within the town, if there are ways that the town may want to uh partner with that. And if and if that idea is one that uh seems uh like it has some subtraction, uh some resonance with you. Uh, we we would like to actually um consider uh a location for where that might be developed, and that is uh the building on that twenty five Rossiter Street. Uh, our group actually uh did a visit to that site uh this past summer and uh we were pretty floored by the the um possibilities that exist with that, not to replace any any of the existing uh treasured uh resources in our town, but as a as a complement to them and perhaps so a place where we could develop something um that dovetails on the existing services in town. Can I jump in? And I would like you to talk about our visit, our visit to Rossiter Street.
Before I do that, I want to say that uh my husband, Tom, and I have lived here permanently for two years. Tom purchased their townhouse out on Country Club Road in two thousand two and slowly uh remodeled and and then uh we were here during COVID and our perspectives changed and we decided to sell the home in Maryland and relocate here because I frequently ran into Bernie Carr and Bernie loves Brandon. And just his his spirit and and it it was just wonderful. And I I have to tell you, I'm a a mother of uh five grown children. Tom and I together have eight adult children. Um my heart is for uh those fourteen year olds and thirteen year olds. I taught eighth graders for twenty years. I'm way more comfortable speaking in front of them than I am with adults, but um I in working first with special needs children and then dovetailing into uh um U S history. There are many people, it's been brought up several times. Tracy, Mister Wyman and Mister Moore, and I think another comment was made. I think um Miss Nelson, you made a comment, looking at those people who um perhaps do not um know where they fit in. I see some of these people maybe at Carnival and I see some of these people maybe at the July fourth. Um, I saw someone walk into our fellowship hall. And at my age, it was churches that usually um were the ones where uh if you couldn't help your neighbor, you knew that your pastor could or the church could and things like that. And times have changed. My five adult children tell me that constantly. And so I I'm stuck on the fence between the way things should be done, which is why are they putting an in-ground pool in their backyard, call their daughter, when you could be doing this? And I hear that a lot tonight in our discussion. So I think as our group has talked with the senior center and we've talked with fifty fifty and um have talked with the parent child center out at Favor Circle. Um, oh, most recently with um Stacy down at the motor lodge. Just the more we look into the great number of resources here. It is the um still the remaining uh nagging question as to are people able to access that help? Because times have changed. You don't necessarily go next door to get a cup of sugar anymore. Or ask the neighbor down the street because you know she stays at home. Can you watch my kids? So back when I was raising um, you know, the five children, um we had something again at the church. It was a Mother's Day Out program. I envision when we got to view uh twenty five Rossiter Street as a place for something parents stay out where the parent who has the kids for the day um needs to run an errand and they can drop the children off. It's a beautiful yard that they have there. There it could be a swing set. Um, there are classrooms there. I thought about uh a person, a church member who did some tutoring um in the fellowship hall. Classrooms at twenty five Rossiter Street are just beautiful and um could be set up for tutoring. On my list, uh the drop-in daycare, um a meeting space, the free health clinic, parenting classes. Uh, I think back in my day, they, you know, you had a support group, parent support group. Uh, but informal or um asking those who are skilled in our community to help with help with parents who are struggling. I can't help but read the police report every week and see that we have some kids and parents out there that could use some support. Unfortunately, in my little bubble, I I don't get to interact with those people. I would like very much the opportunity, not for me to do something for them, but for me to be a part of their community and they are part of my community with any expertise I have. And what what means they might have. One of the things we started with was what happened to the laundromat when Tom and I moved up here permanently. So this building would also support a couple of uh two or three commercial washers and dryers. I often read that the police department has to transport people down to Rutland. Um, or either physical or mental. For either physical or mental uh healthcare. Could twenty-five Rossiter Street be a holding place overnight for something like this? On the brighter side of things, could it, could that beautiful kitchen there be used for those entrepreneurs? That I know of and many that are out there that we don't know of. Could they use a larger kitchen space? To cook meals if not for themselves and their families, but to an extended community? It's a cup, a place where you could do not only a cooking class. But just invite people in, maybe from the Motor Lodge who are housed there. Because they do not have permanent housing to come and use a kitchen. And uh make a home cooked meal. Exercise space is there, as you all know, I'm sure that was where the former Pilate Studio was. I think. Oh, another one. I was raised. Never knowing how to use a drill. Or a handsaw. How to change a tire, none of that, has a three-bay garage on this property. Could we enlist? Not again, not to do the charitable, you know, we're gonna help you thing. But to incorporate people in the community who have these skills but no place to exercise them. Would this be a place that we could uh encourage people to share or or teach those who need to know how to use a drill or saw or. Mutual care, I like that, and there was an article in the Vermont Digger about mutual aids groups. Reaching out during this, these climate, you know, disasters, so. Back to what Sarah said. As not a formal group. We're still networking, I heard about uh. Rideshare opportunities that might crop up in the future, um. I know that a small coffee group that I go to, we shared phone numbers. Just to have a place maybe for people who aren't connected on a low-key level, give them a place to connect. So um a CDC is something that we thought might be our ask. For some ARPA months. My mouth is dry.
And we we also appreciate, yeah, uh, knowing that there's already a list that's compiled, your willingness to 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 give us a space on your agenda to to uh describe ours in a little more detail.
Thank you for your.
Thank you very much.
And. I think depending how we're gonna do, such as co- weighed bunch of different suggestions. And I think how we're gonna try to do that. So it isn't the, if somebody wanted to look at these suggestions, it is in the packet, they can get them online or whatever. And we as a board, I think we're gonna go home and. They adjust some of these. And. We'll continue on after the discussion. At later date, as a board, but if anybody right here, it's. In here has any, anybody to put into it, we're. Only happy to listen to it.
Could I have? Sarah, um, will you operate as a nonprofit organization? Would you operate as a nonprofit organization?
Yes, a CDC is is technically a five oh one C three and. The our church. Is also a five oh one C three, um, we don't have the capacity to do a number of these. And we feel that. That. This really calls for the. It will be more successful if if we are able to partner with with other other community stakeholders and and.
Other organizations?
Well, yeah, to to offer a structure that that perhaps the town might welcome um to have. To to. Seek out some of these, to develop some of these endeavors um on a lot of different fronts, um. It also serves as as a. A structure that. Grant grant funding would be available for a lot of programs where we aren't in a position uh to do that as an informal group or as a church. So.
Would you be open for a seven?
With, I mean, we're.
Does it op, will it operate somewhat like the crisis center in a way, would that be some aspect of it?
I think what we're, I mean, and I think this. We're, we're first starting with conversations to determine if this is something that would be welcome in the town. And uh would this, would this help? Would this help for uh on? You know, for the town, for for other constituents in the town to, would it be, would it be a helpful? Think of it as a community center, I guess, where you and and we're also thinking from a particularly from a community economic development. Kind of through that lens. Uh, that's that's some of the um. Expertise that Julie Demery comes with and and so. It it would not only be a. Uh, a place to offer. It would be social, economic wellness, uh, all sorts of different things, programs and things could could happen.
I think about what Mr. Wyman was talking about volunteers on our sports teams and things. You know, been there, done that, older and over, the Dover, five of them, you know, it was a lot. I wonder if there aren't people in town who would enjoy and have the skill set to do that. But might be a single parent and and need uh, you know, only so many hours in a day. And they're unable to devote the time to that, though maybe if they dropped. They had a drop-in place for the kids, uh, they could spend two hours on the phone phoning something about the sports event. I I feel like we are not. Wanting to present. The plan, I think we are really wanting. At this point in time to look at uh. What are those uh needs that in spite of how wonderful Brandon is? Where are the gaps and are there?
Through the cracks.
Right, and is there a way together in conversation? If you haven't seen Driven By Twenty-five Rossiter Street, I'll just say it has a lot of parking. We know about parking in this town. No, it's a great, it is a great facility, um, you know, remodel, remodeled, um, what in two thousand and seven, I believe, six hundred, six hundred square feet. And it could go on and on, but it's online if you would like to look at that uh commercial property. But we don't, are not coming with um set. Answers. When we don't even know.
Inviting con- conversation.
So if I may, um. I've already talked to Barbara about this to some extent, um. I think what you guys are looking to offer is a lot of what people have been. Asking for in the town plans and this and in this, um. In terms of what we as a select board can do, um. So when you ask about, because you definitely should do a CDC. Because uh. By doing that, we do make an entity that can then seek grants and seek loans and seek funding. Know that CDCs are separate from municipalities, they are private nonprofit organizations, so you would. Need a board of directors and all of those other things, um. So I'm not entirely sure what assistance the town could offer in forming the CDC. Um, what you might be looking for on that. So so you and and so. Basically, you'd be wanting to grant pay the remaining fees down for registration fees, um.
Any other? Discussion on ARPA? Any suggestions other than? From folks who are here? The cops, we're going to move on.
Quick question, just how much is in the pot right now?
Five hundred fifty-nine thousand sixty-one dollars.
Not a lot.
No, I beg your pardon. That's, that's the. I I guess I think it's quite different, that seems like a lot of money.
Yeah, it costs that much for a house, so it's not a lot of money.
All right, we're gonna move on to fiscal. Let's look on the board.
Um, I make a motion that we um sign the warrant for a hundred eighty-two thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars, eight thirty cents for FY twenty-two twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Second page, Mastercard. A thirties, is it cross pen?
That was, I guess, that was uh authorized at the police department for an officer who was newly hired and that's apparently customary.
We should uncustomary, that seems like that's kind of wasteful. We don't, we aren't flushed with money and we just seem to be going down the road and. Here, here's a pen, go to the bank and get a pen, that's ridiculous. It's small potatoes, but. We're, we're hemorrhaging money. With no one in sight and. I'm kind of sick of it myself. Please pass that along.
I will, yeah, it was uh, it was the officer who uh graduated from police.
What was the cost?
Thirty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents, it was for an engraved cross pen.
Any other discussion on the? First one, on the first one.
Yeah, for a viewer, this is the one with a hundred and thirty-nine thousand for the street, but.
Right, that's the line.
And are they back to work on that, because it was on hold for a while?
Uh, a a lot of times when uh the bills will come in, it's so like a big piece of equipment that got delivered, but it was not being installed for some time, so. There was actually this, I think there's one in this warrant and it's one of the next warrants. Um, and in the ball, the big piece of equipment.
Do we know when they're going to?
I think they're supposed to start in the middle of August.
Because this also has a uh eleven thousand interest. Paying up, right?
Uh, on that law. The bond, no, right.
Yeah, yeah. Which. You know, adds up when you're not working.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Some treasures dropped off, but um. It was, it was not optimal, the uh, the the way that the. The funding and the work schedule lined up with it.
Is that something that's possible to to be remedied so that that kind of thing doesn't happen?
It was basically stopped because of a supply chain issue where they could not get in the stuff that was required to go in next, so to speak. And so work was suspended. The contractor did some other stuff for other people that they could work for and the town is just kind of taking delivery of all this equipment.
Oh, thank you, because I thought before it was said that they could only do this other work for other people at this time of year. I didn't hear the supply chain thing.
So the the only reason that there was a consideration that they do some other work was that they didn't have the piece.
I had to do this, but yeah, I need real.
I had, I had a conversation with somebody who makes some of the parts for sewer things, and it's just. Yeah, you you seconded it there, because I was like, okay, explain this to me. I saw. Yeah, it was like, it's just one of those, like, nobody has.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the first one? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
May, I'm opposed.
Don't be.
Move that we accept and pay, we warrant name out of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, three hundred and one hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-four.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Uh, we'll start off with discussions. I'm curious to know about the um Fourth of July community relief that you paid Pittsburgh agents on thirty-nine dollars today. We had four Pittsburgh officers come to Brandon that day to assist with.
Yes, the chair of that committee, I appreciate that kind of Brandon doing that, but also last year they hired flaggers and it was. This was actually a better deal for them this year, they had flaggers and some Pittsburgh people, this was a. Decrease over last year for providing great support, because they have more officers and they can decide not to go with flaggers, they had all Pittsburgh officers.
And it's how many you needed to be safe, yeah.
A lot of roads to close.
Any other discussion? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Yeah, I just have it. Um, we're gonna recess. The board of selection at this time, we have an executive session on the board. Uh, any, anybody have any communications or anything? If not, we're gonna recess and we'll. Say. We are. Ready to go, have a motion to go into executive sessions.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
And. Any discussion?
So I would just note, um, and this is for the purpose of public meeting laws that we need to read about that. Uh, it's for the appointment, appointment or employment revaluation of a public officer or informing to include the town managers. For one VSA section two one three seven three seven three.
There you go, yeah, what she said. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, I have it, yeah, okay, we're gonna close out to the board, yeah. All right, um. What do we need, we need a?
Motion.
We've come out of the.
Come out of executive session with no.
With no action required, no required. So we need a motion to adjourn, I'd be glad to make that motion to adjourn. I'll.
Second.
Undebatable, no discussion. Adjourned.
You have to vote.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Go eat, Tim.